5021 orders. And Alex, would you please, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. It is nice to be back sitting in the boardroom for this meeting. Our first order of business, we will be waiting until 7:15 for the intended budget presentation and discussion. So at this time, I will open up the meeting for public comment. So if anybody would like to address the board at this time. Okay, then we will move on.
She's there. Behind you.
She's behind you.
First of all, we have a resolution to approve the minutes from the March 25 meeting. And they are in front of you. You've all had them in your questions. If not, I'm giving a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Bakke?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. They are in front of you all. Have a chance to look them over. If you have any particular questions on anything that's here. I guess I would add one question. Onings for pump stations, whether or not maybe you might address that.
I currently have onings that go over the controls for our pump stations. So when we voted on, when it started raining out, and we're going to work on them, then we open the doors, rain and all that's not going to hit the pump station. And you can...
Okay.
Originally, I had cheaper ones. And I tried, and the weather and the snow and the wind did not... They didn't wear well. They broke. So I bought a little bit heavier and dudier ones. But they came in handy. They're nice to have.
Okay. Are there any other questions that you would like to add?
Do you understand?
It's a $4,500 charge. Some law firm? Geez. I don't know what that is.
Oh, please. Yeah, I can't. Yeah, I don't... Can't go there.
That's a little bit higher than I'd be originally. Open charge. Oops. Forgot about that $15.
Okay. There are no further questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Bakke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Abalito?
Chief Frick, in line? Aye.
Now I'm doing about 10 things at once, but thank you. Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have a series of budget modifications and transfers. I will... I'm not sure if I want to summarize all of these, but we only have some of the highlights that are here. We have, first of all, a decrease in revenue, which I think we may have expected from the year that we've had. State aid and CHIPS funding by $30,105.96. We did have a revenue increase in state aid under transportation, the paid New York EWR at $22,371.01. We had, it looked like, a decrease in expenditures with transfers from other funds of $32,687.70. And then a whole number of increases in expenditures from tree removal and trimming, which was the largest, $15,245, to the auditor at $2,000. The zoning board contractual at $1,500, and the operation of equipment and vehicles at $2,000, and miscellaneous others. So you have a chance to look these over. I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the general fund budget modifications.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Bakke?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign the engagement letter with Fried Maxic for the referred compensation plan. This is going to encompass a period from January 1, 2020, through... Is that really what we're looking at? 2020, from January 1 to December? Or are we looking at 2021?
That's for '20. They're currently auditing the... The... This audit is by the calendar year. So they're doing... Right now, they're doing 2020.
So this is an engagement letter. And it, I believe, is in a... It's $2,050. Is that correct? Our P S number of the search is described above. It will be $2,050. So I will ask for a resolution for... I would like to authorize... Resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign the engagement letter with Fried Maxic.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Bakke?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
And next, we have a resolution to approve an increase to the village's original NY2A processional services agreement for 35 hours. To account for the scope beyond the original proposal, this would be an additional 59 hours totaling $5,605. I believe that the request is for providing historical context. This is beyond the scope of work that they originally asked for. Providing historical context and documentation related to the village and town wastewater treatment histories. Providing outfall information to the DEC, including design of outfall modifications. Also, after NY2A submission, providing the DEC with descriptions and figures of the town wastewater treatment unit processes and how the village flows are conveyed throughout. Corresponding with holding meetings and providing official response to DEC questions and finding, providing interpretation of availability and availability to answer board questions about the draft speed permit when released. And that will total $59 hours. So I am asking for approval for an increase of $5,605 to cover this additional work.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Bakke?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. I have 7:15 on my watch. So at this particular point, I would like to provide the opportunity, I think, to have our treasurer, Marcia Adams, to provide us information on the proposed budget for 2021, '22. And then it will be open for a public comment. Marcia?
Thank you, dear. Okay. I don't know whether the mic... Is the mic working? Or should I just be loud?
For earth.
Okay. I first wanted to... I imagine everyone here is familiar with the budget process already. But in case someone's on Facebook or not, I'm just going to do a quick overview of the process and a little of the terminology. And then we can get into some numbers. The budget process really is a year-round thing. But actually, putting together the budget for the upcoming year starts in December. I'll give a heads up to the department heads to start thinking about projects that are coming up in the next year. Yeah, just ask them to start chewing on what they're thinking is going to happen in the next year. And then January to mid-March or so is a series of meetings, discussions, workshops, spreadsheet finagling, and various number crunching projects. And then the deadline for this public hearing is April 15. So we're under the wire there. And the board needs to adopt the budget by May 1. Okay. And there are quite a number of things to consider when you're building the new budget. Historical data is very important. The estimates from department heads are also vital. I couldn't put together a realistic budget without those things. Some things are already established. We already know what certain revenues and expenditures will be. So those are easy to plugs. Talking about upcoming projects from the department heads, those things. Potential changes in state or federal funding. That's been a kind of big question mark this year because of, you know, what's working out with the federal... I can't remember the name of the relief act. We're not really sure how accessible those funds are going to be. So I did not budget for them. Let's see. Economic trends. And finally, the tax cap and the constitutional tax limit need to be considered due pertaining to property tax. The tax cap is... That puts a cap on the increase, the maximum increase year over year. And the constitutional tax limit is an overall restriction on the amount of tax that we can charge. I looked it up. The village's constitutional tax limit, it's a percentage of the total assessed values. And per its based on the last five years or so of values, our constitutional tax limit is about 10 times what our tax is. So we've got some room there. Okay. So on to the general fund. I'm on slide four. The tax rate per $1,000 of assessed property value will be going from 213 to 218. Estimated revenues. And then we have three sources of money to spend. We have estimated revenues. We have special reserves where we've put aside money officially and legally that can only be spent on certain things. And then we have our fund balance, which is like accumulated savings. So our estimated revenues are down a bit from last year, largely again due to COVID. Our sales taxes have been down. We plan to take $109,000 out of appropriated reserves to buy new vehicles as scheduled. And appropriated fund balance refers to... I can't remember what had to be done. But sewer had a major emergency repair and had to borrow money from the general fund. So this $150,000 represents sewers paying down some of that debt. And then, again, for people who don't know government accounting speak, appropriations, budgeted appropriations, just means what we are budgeting to spend. So then again, we're budgeted to spend less than we are currently spending this year. Are we good so far? Anyone have questions? Comments? Okay. Then the next two slides are just pie charts of the general fund's estimated revenues. More than half of our revenue comes from county sales tax, which I understand we are in a unique position in that regard. I don't really understand at this point why that is. But anyway, that's how it is. Let's see. Property taxes are just over 20% of our estimated revenue. And let's see. The budgeted appropriations, again, that's just our budgeted spend. The majority of that, or the largest pie slice, is for transportation. Keeping your roads, sidewalks, all nice and smooth and ready to go. And general government support is those of us in the front office. No, my job has a job. And employee benefits is another large part. Retirement and healthcare largely. Okay. Sewer fund. The sewer rate will also be going up from $150 per 60,000 gallon unit to $195. That's represented also in the base rate per quarter. It will be going up. And our estimated revenues are almost entirely due to the aforementioned sewer rates. Only a tiny little bit of it is from sewer fees and other just miscellaneous revenues. Let's see. Budgeted appropriations for sewers. Almost 30% of the budget for the upcoming year is set aside to replace our '04. Is it an '04, the flush truck? '02, '04?
It was '04.
We've got an old flush truck that really needs replacing. So we will be doing that. That sewer's big ticket thing for the year. And budgeted appropriations for sewer, that's on our last page. Home community service in the red, that's just, you know, actually treating sewage. And all the rest of it. The debt service chunk, the 20% in purple, is extra big this year because of that $150,000 rebate in general. That's all I have for you today. I'm happy to take any questions. If anyone wants clarification or details about any of this.
You don't look like we're in bad shape.
No.
And then we can open up for the question.
I have a fun question. Sorry. This, the sewer, the budgeted appropriations, I might have made another note when you said, it's, some of this is going to... It's for payment back general. That was about $150 that's allocated. It's shown in the general side of things.
Yep.
The breakdown. But there's also the development of reserve accounts. And this is going to fund, set up the funds of those as well, right? Or begin the process of something as well?
Yes. We're not putting anything in that this year. But that, yes, we're cleaning up all the debt so that, like, to lay the groundwork for an emergency fund, rainy day fund.
Yeah. We have a self-reliance way to credit card bill. But when you get that squared away, then start putting them in the measure.
Yes, yeah. Thanks, Jake.
Do you have questions, Jerry?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, I asked the same question Jake asked.
Oh, oh.
About the reserves.
Okay.
The original thought, I think, was to begin building those reserves. But the accounting probably will not let us forgive the whole $480,000. So we can forgive part of that.
A good one, yeah. There was a good part of that.
So by next year budget, just wondering, next year, we will be done with that and begin to put lead into...
That's what I understood, Marcia. Turn the market mic on, dude. Oh, my voice isn't deep enough. The mic is ready for a public comment hearing whenever you're ready. I got it.
At this point, the presentation, I would like to open it up to the public for any comments or questions that you would like to direct to the board or to our treasurer. So at this point, I will open up the floor. Public comment. Say your name.
Hello. Peter Elder, 59 Dunning Avenue. Just wanted to compliment the board on the hard work of this budget this year. And, you know, I have always been an anti-tax, anti-spend type person. But I also believe you have to be prudent. Oh, sorry. You have to be prudent. I think this budget is a good example of the board being prudent. So you... I think you're finding the sweet spot on the rate for the sewer, which I think is impressive. It's something that took a long time to do. But I mean, last year, according to the audit, the sewer made money. With this, I think you're setting a good precedent here of again finding that good rate to let it endure. So that's another good prudent move going into the future. So the increase in the general fund is modest, particularly considering... Has that rate moved in 20 years? 10 years? It's been a long time, right?
The rate?
Yeah. It's been a really long time.
Correct.
Yeah. It's about that rate in 2012. So that I know. So again, I just want to compliment you on not only the hard work of you, Marcia, because you put, the treasurer does a lot of that, but also the fact that you're looking into the future, which is something the board should be doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I would then close the public comment portion of this public hearing and say that if anybody has any further questions, they are certainly welcome to send an email or call. And we will try to answer all of the questions that we can. We have certainly tried to be physically responsible in terms of using the money that is entrusted to the village board for covering expenses. And we will certainly try to do that in the future. I think with this budget, especially the sewer budget, we are in the process of paying down something that was unexpected and hard to, I suppose, pay for. And we had to borrow out of the general fund. But I think we're finding at this particular point just what, where we need to be in terms of our costs. We started very low, not knowing five years ago or so, six years ago, in terms of what we needed to do in order to be solvent with the sewer fund budget that we're finally beginning to work out, you know. But I think our general budget this year being down, lower than it was last year, is showing that we are sensitive to the ongoing issues of the pandemic and the retinues that, revenue loss, in fact, that we've experienced. Hopefully, now that things will begin to pick up. But it's interesting how more and more I see Amazon Prime trucks in my village. We just traveled from Florida to Rochester. And the number of Amazon trucks and trucks in general on the road was tremendously increased from what it was just a year ago. People are really going to, you know, online purchases. And I hope that that will not impact us too much in the future. That's the scary part of it, not going in to buy things from our local stores and, you know, places and so on. But we'll see what happens. We are trying to be conscious of the budget of those who are living here in the village. Bert, have any comments to add?
The new ice cream shop is open on Main Street.
My daughter went there to tonight.
We should all stop in and say hi and wish it good luck.
Did they come before or planning for it or anything?
They didn't have to.
Oh, they didn't have to? Why?
Administrative. It's just that, like Jake said, it's administrative, kids are used to it.
Oh, and that's all?
They weren't reconfiguring the building.
It looked like the ice cream machine my granddaughter brought home were very good dealing, so.
See, I've been buying gift certificates, you know, from the various places and stuff like that. I was even in Kirby's yesterday to get a couple of belts, you know, for the... But that's all you can do right now. It's so difficult.
Yeah, I should probably go before Jake over there. Him and our new building inspector. We're checking it out today, so.
Well, it's part of the job.
He is a nice young man. I'm really happy we have him.
He's a nice man. He's very near.
Well, because he's young, young man.
Sweetie.
But they buried it that way.
Yes.
And we will be hearing from him at our next meeting.
Yes, I was very...
I'm not going to lie and say it's going to be quick this week, I do have a few things. The, just some updates, I was, I'm going to ask for some surplus declarations, I was getting my computer updated, I guess, starting at 5 o'clock, so I wanted to shut it down, so I didn't have time to send it out. But we do, if, if, you know, entertain them, they're kind of minor things, a Toro single-stage snow blower, buffer pads, a concrete mixer, a Husqvarna hand mower, mini rodentiller, brick saw, the generator, we already have declared surplus last September, the Christmas pole decorations, I think the other ones are working out wonderfully, so we can get rid of the snowflake ones that we had from before that no one liked.
Yep.
Except for the buyer, that's going to love them because they're great. We have the caseload er with the, we already had the Wildcat compost turner declared surplus, we want to keep the bucket on the front of our loader, and it's kind of hard to send a loader with nothing on it, so we talked about it this afternoon, we thought we'd put the caseload er, because we have a new one, we put the caseload er with the Wildcat turner and tried to pair those up together and see, the Wildcat turner, the first time, it's very limited, group of, or limited demand for it, I guess, so if we pair it with the loader, we might get that extra little, little bit, so. And W4, I think we already had that, oh, Plow and Wing for W4 that we declared surplus last month. Anything, and one poly tank that we have up in the standpipe building for, we don't know what, and so it's time to make a little room and get rid of that as well. I can certainly, I'll send the help, type this up a little nicer, but they said we were running out of time today, and I said, the option that we typically do is going to be a live option this year at the beginning of May, I think the 8th, I want to say it is, so we want to make sure they have plenty of time to get in their advertising.
May?
May, yeah, El Myra, so we want to have time to get in with their advertising.
Yeah.
If we put in now pictures that go out, you know, across the, everywhere, I guess, so we'll get the wider, wider marketing effort on it, so. That's it for the surplus declarations. Oh, it's on.
It needs to be right there.
It's supposed to sit six feet apart.
Listen.
I learned the rules.
You're not getting picked up.
Your voice is not loud enough. I told you.
Just an update, the West Main Street sidewalk project's going to start soon, that's the community development block grant that we made last time. Obviously, the, or the cobblestone on Main, it's getting ready to start, I talked to the owner there, they actually might be ahead of our project, so we don't want them to open and then close down their parking lots the first, as soon as they open. We might say, it's not going to cover their costs, but we might work it out with them that if they want to do the sidewalks as they're doing their work there, we go by and deal with their own entrances, we can reimburse them, I believe, whatever we would pay the contractor for the same exact work, and then we're not interrupting, you know, they've been trying to open forever, and we don't want to, you know, hey, open up and not close down, it's flocking your driveway, that's not very good welcoming commitment, so.
That would be a bad word.
Yeah, we're going to try to work it out with them, they're really great to work with on everything else so far, I assume, so. The Ready Grant, that's the Sandbar Wells, we just heard from the DC, we asked them quite a while ago to review our portion of the decommissioning of the wells, there's not, there's not a lot of engineering, frankly, because it's decommissioning something, we don't, we don't plan, there's a, you know, there's a book, this is how you have to do it, and there's rules, but they wanted, because they were linked together with the sewer, the town sewer pump station, as, not linked together physically, like, if you're on, but linked together is one grant, they wanted to review it all at once. They haven't got the 90% plans, I guess, from the town yet, so they said they're just going to move forward with reviewing our portion of it. Frankly, we were hoping to have it timed out, because whenever we start that work, it's, you know, it's around the marina, we don't want to work around the marina and gym, so it might end up having to go into the fall and do the work then, but we might get it approved, because we don't want to, you know, in a busy season, we had, you know, this year was wonderful, but it's just waiting for approvals, we could have had it done, you know, with the weather, it's so nice, March, April, here, so, but it is what it is, we're, we're keep working on it, we do have to work with, get some easements, so I'll probably be asking soon, once we can get an easement drawn up and to give to the property owner around there to be able to do the work, and we'll have that at the board for request authorization to sign that or approve it once, as good with it and everything. I also submitted a, responded to an RFI, a request for information for New York State's, the mayor attended to me, that was New York State's first veteran cemetery, they're looking, I was surprised that the New York State doesn't have a veteran cemetery, a state-run one. There's national ones, federally run ones, and there's some, actually some counties, but the state itself doesn't, it's one of three states that doesn't have one yet, New York, Florida, and Oregon, but they're looking for land, and we just happen to have some land that you can't do much else with, so we submitted some information, we'll see where it goes.
That's good.
Yeah, we submitted it, and then they had some clarification, so we sent them that. At first, when I saw it, I'm like, eh, I don't know if it's going to work, and I looked at it more and more, and I thought, this would be a really nice spot, so.
Need the well field?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is one of the permitted uses.
It is.
Yeah, really.
So, and there's, and one of very few permitted uses.
Yeah, but that, that's great.
Yeah, it might be a really great, hopefully, uh, we'll see where it goes, and hopefully.
My bet is the neighbors will still complain.
Well, they're quiet neighbors, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, those are the residents.
No.
Those would be the future residents.
Right.
But the existing neighbors, I bet you they squat.
Well, hopefully they get it figured out before I need one.
I like that.
The 2A application, which was for the speed, it's for a meeting last, a virtual meeting last week, was it last week?
Yeah, last week.
With EFC, it was regarding the funding.
Yes.
You know, that in June, the end of June, the funding, the village received a $1.4 million grant, and then the initial project, then 0% financing on the rest, those letters and those grants are coming due, or, excuse me, coming, where, they want us to get going, I don't know if we're going to use them, but they're going to, looking to give an extension if they know where we're going, I think the board, the village, and the engineers explain, you know, where we are in the process and the decision-making now, and it sounds like they're looking real favorably on the, or on the extension part.
Good.
But at the same time, the speedies permit, that the folks from the DC, we're reviewing that in Albany, were there, and they said that that should have gone to the region this week, Wednesday or Thursday, Tuesday or Wednesday, so it should have gone to the region this week, and they're going to do their review on it, and then they'll provide it, and the engineer can review it and make some comments, and it's just going, you know, going back and forth, there's a.
What kind of chance?
I think one of those, the region, obviously, it's been on, you know, everybody's been talking about it for a while, so hopefully they've got some ideas, I mean, ultimately, there's permit writers in Albany that are going to say, hey, here's the limits that you have, and functionally, nothing's changed in other than definitions, so I can't imagine much changing, but.
They didn't give the impression that it was going to take a super long time.
No, it didn't sound like, yeah, it didn't sound like it was going to take a long time, so.
Good.
And I think that's a, one other thing, I'm going to take that orange nice lady.
Yes.
Well, that's a.
Do you want the resolution?
Oh, yeah, thank you. If I could, way back about 15 minutes ago, I started talking, and that was where the surplus declarations, so I have this list, which I'll write up and provide to, whether it's the one I list, or I read, so if I can have authorization or if those could be declared surplus, then we can.
Oh, okay. You were going to add that, so.
I'm going to hold off, because you said we might be able to offset our cost of these, and if the new ones hummed and the old ones hummed, maybe the old ones weren't the issue, so, maybe it's the wires or something, so.
That's what I think.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But thank you. Now I'm done.
So then allowing for a motion to declare those number of items that were mentioned previously as surplus, so that we can send that through.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Balkin?
Aye.
Trusty Lawler?
Aye.
Trusty Belito?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passed. Just one thing, too, I sent out the, the recording of your meeting to all of your emails.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a report from our court.
Yep.
Up to frustration of not having the system plugged in.
Yes, that was a fun day.
We'll be working on, we'll be working on getting a new system here, so. Okay, anyone else have anything that they would like to bring to the attention of us?
The director's tentos.
Okay, then I would announce that our next meeting will be a village board meeting, and that April 22nd here in the boardroom. We will be live, and we will be addressing the budget and voting on the budget, so. Nice to be back in the Rochester area, hope I brought some good weather for you, 80 degrees plus today and sun.
Yes.
So enjoy it. All right, I will adjourn the motion then to close the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Lawler?
Aye.
Trusty Balkin?
Aye.
Trusty Belito?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, one on the seventh, I'm bad. Nick?
State Farm, over here, Nick.